Provided to the school committee on November third. We'll start with a presentation from the superintendent and following that we will open it to the floor for public comment. And again, if you wish to speak, please do sign up on the sign up sheet. We'll be calling people up in the order in which you've signed up on that sheet. Turn that over now, Dr. Zek.
Elizabeth Pauli is going to actually start us off, but I just want to make a few comments to start. First of all, good evening everybody. Happy Thanksgiving and thank you for being, coming out on a cold night and right before vacation. We appreciate it. And thank you to Horace Mann. I think I saw Principal Tully here. Thank you for hosting tonight. I just wanted, just before we start, I wanted to highlight the fact that as a school system, we're really proud of the positive momentum that we see across the schools right now. We've seen improvement in our attendance. We've seen improvement in students. Our enrollment has grown in the last few years, and we have no schools that are underperforming as the state defines underperforming right now. And in fact, we have schools in the last few years who have been recognized as schools of distinction for their, for their work. And so I just want to highlight that there's a lot of really positive things happening. We also have really high demand programs like the Carlton Innovation Model, the dual-language program at Bentley, our early childhood programs, early college programs, and all our CTE programs at the high school, just to name a few. I'm sure I'm forgetting some of them. So I want to make sure that we highlight that. What is becoming, what keeps me up at night is the ability to continue to sustain those programs that we know our families want and that are good for our students and we're seeing, and where we see our students thriving and achieving. And so we are, we're faced with having to look at a myriad of ways of trying to balance our budget, and we've had to do that over the last few years. And Elizabeth will talk a little bit about that, about this, and there's, our presentation tonight is a little shorter than it was Monday, last Monday night, but all the backup information you can find online, which has details about those deficits over time. But with another four and a half to five million dollar deficit that we face this year, we felt it was important to explore the elementary reconfiguration or the merging of elementary schools as a strategy to help balance the budget for this year, but also to sustain our work for years to come. Because this is not just about this school year, but it's about the future and running a district that we can wrap our arms around, we can do so efficiently, and make sure that we can continue to invest in the high-quality programs we have. I do want to call out that the consultants who worked with us are here, Dr. Faudy and Dr. Anderson. They were the folks that worked with us to present the recommendations and the large fact base that you, that is available online. And they're here not necessarily to, not to answer questions, but we want to hear the comments that people make. We want them to hear that so that they can inform questions that might arise and give us feedback and their perspective on what the community brings tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent Elizabeth Pauli, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
We did get some feedback about streamlining our presentation. So as Dr. Zright mentioned, the full deck from last Monday is available online, so you can see all of the detail. But I will quickly go through where we find ourselves now and hopefully provide enough context for this conversation about our budget. So as in previous years, the Sound Public Schools is facing some funding issues, some major funding issues. Our costs are rising, and some of those are due to intentional choices that we have made as a district. So for example, we agreed with our bargaining units that we should pay competitive wages. We want to recruit and retain the most qual, highly qualified educators, and so we did make the choice to increase wages that are competitive with our neighbors and competitive in this region. And seventy-five to eighty percent of our budget is people. So when we make those choices, it does increase our costs. We also are experiencing cost increases based on external factors that we cannot control. So rising utilities costs, rising costs for students who have to go out of district for their special education needs, rising costs for transportation. All of those are rising faster than our funding. And so even as it costs more to run our schools, we are not receiving enough funds from the state to keep pace with these rising costs. So at least two-thirds of our funds come from the city of Salem, and that percentage is growing too. Because as the state funds are not keeping pace with our rising costs, the demand for funds from the city of Salem increases with each passing year. So as a reminder, we develop with our internal staff, with our stakeholders, with parents. We develop our budget proposal.
Assistant Superintendent.
Yes.
They're saying they can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me? Oh, no. Okay.
Is it on?
Oh, hold it. Okay. All right. If you were there last Monday, you saw that I can't do reading glasses, notes, and microphone. So one of those is going to have to go. So, and it's not reading glasses. So we work to create the, the Sound Public Schools budget based on the programmatic needs that we see every year, based on our obligations to our students. We work very closely with the city to identify a percentage increase that can help us meet those needs as best we can for students. And because most of the funding comes from the city of Salem, we work very closely with City Hall to identify what is the highest possible percentage increase for our budget. We bring that budget to this school committee in the springtime. They have public hearings and discuss and then ultimately approve our budget, send it to City Hall, to City Council for final approval. So that is the process, and if you didn't hear, most of our funding does in fact come from the city of Salem. So as we look ahead to next year, we expect there will be a gap of 4.5 to 5 million dollars. Now, it's still very early, and there are things we don't know. We have some major contracts coming up for rebid, including our transportation contract. So that could change, what, the size of our gap could change. We also don't know what our Chapter 70 will be. And so Chapter 70 is the main source of state funding for education. It is a formula based on enrollment and demographics of our student, our students. And the formula has been problematic for the city of Salem since about 2019 with the passage of the Student Opportunity Act. And there are two problems. One is the state through this formula estimates that Salem is more able to pay for its schools than Salem is actually able to pay. So our share in what the formula says we should be paying, our share has increased, and the state estimated share has declined by ten percentage points over the last three years. So the state estimates that we can pay about seventy-one percent of what it costs to educate our students. So that has been problematic for us as costs have risen, and we have been unable to keep pace with that. Among gateway cities, we are expected to pay almost the highest percentage, with only two other gateway cities paying more towards their school costs than Salem. The other way that the formula has been problematic, and I know some of you attended the Chapter 70 hearings that the state is having, is that it also underestimates the rising cost of inflation. And so there are problems with the formula, and our city and legislative leaders have flagged that for the state. And now, at this moment, the Chapter 70 formula, there is a commission looking at how to improve that for communities. But in the meantime, we do expect there will be a significant gap in our funding. So we have several ways that we could address this gap, and none of them are good. We could reduce our district-level staff, so that would be a combination of central office and people who travel from school to school. We could reduce non-classroom positions in schools who help make schools run. We could increase class sizes. Our contractual limit is twenty-five for most of the elementary school grades and a little higher for the middle and high school. And our classes are not that large. They tend to be between twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So we could increase class sizes across our all grades. We could increase caseloads for student, for staff working with multilingual learners and students with disabilities. We could close pre-K. We could reduce or increase the sharing of specialist teachers like art and music. We could reduce transportation, and we could merge or reconfigure schools. So none of these options are ideal, but the conversation is about how we can continue to best serve all students well. So even as we consider these difficult and imperfect options, we know that none of them alone would close what we estimate our budget gap to be. So we estimate it to be between 4.5 million and 5 million dollars. We know there are some unknowns, so that number could change. But we will need to make a combination of strategic choices to help close this gap and balance the budget next year. And, and as we do so, our goal is first to serve all students well, and also to ensure that the district remains financially sustainable now and into the future. We have had this structural deficit for several years, and so the choices we make now may set us up for financial health in the future. So I'm going to stop there, and if you want more details, as the superintendent said, our full slide deck is available on the Internet.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So just want to give you some additional context about the process and then share some of the questions that we've been receiving and some of our answers to some of the most frequently asked questions and comments we've received. So why, why reconfiguration? One of the reasons that we've talked about this possibility, and this has been over the last few months, few years, one, this was an avenue we wanted to pursue when we started to look at the fact that we were running more school buildings than most other towns and cities of our size. It is obviously expensive to run and operate every building. There's a cost that I don't have to tell you all, that, you know, utilities, repairs, there's staffing that go into it. And so for, and, and also our central office is, has to be set up to support a certain number of schools. We, as a, as a school district, we're way, we're running way more schools, and I'll share this in a moment, than most towns and cities who enroll the number of kids we do, which is almost 4,000 students. We also have 200 empty seats across our elementary schools in classrooms that we have, that we currently operate. So those are empty seats in that they're not filled up to the caps that we've set, which are lower than the contractual caps, but we set caps for every classroom, and there is empty space in those existing classrooms. But on top of that, we also have spaces throughout the district that were intended to be classrooms that are also empty, or not serving as classrooms. They're not empty because schools use them. You move in to the space you have, and so they're used as offices, they're used, in some schools, they are empty, or they're used for after-school programs or meeting rooms and so forth. And we believe that there's more than thirteen hundred extra seats in those spaces as well. That's if, that's pulling out all the rooms that are dedicated for music and art, because we want to make sure that those spaces are available when we look at the number of empty seats that we have in schools. So that is quite a bit of room we have across our elementary schools. Even the schools that, that many think are full are really not full. Schools do a good job of using every space they have for the purposes of serving kids, but that wasn't their, necessarily their intended use. So by comparison, the average size of a Massachusetts elementary school is 428 students. Okay? You can see in this chart, we do have four schools, and this doesn't include the ECC because it's a unique school, but we have four schools that are under 320 students. These are in real time, or maybe from two weeks ago time, our enrollment, it does fluctuate. But we, we have small schools. We only have two schools that are remotely close to the state average, and that's Witchcraft, which is just above at 467, and then Bates, which is at 412 students. And then, as I mentioned before, districts that have about the number of students we have, on average, have seven and a half schools. We run eleven schools right now. And, you know, some of you know, we have two small high schools that we operate, and then we run seven elementary schools, if you include the ECC as well. So in this process, you know, our goal's entering this was, nobody wants to sit here and talk about configuring, reconfiguring schools, merging schools. That is not what gets me up in the morning. It doesn't get anybody up in the morning to do that. That is, we know that this, we don't, we're not interested in causing disruption. We're, we're not interested in, in, in the idea of like this, I'm, I'm an educator. I didn't get into this work to have to merge buildings. But we also have to have hard conversations about the budget, and we have to think, we have to, have to think in the short term, but also the long term, about what's in the best interest and health of this school system, and that's why we're having these conversations right now. I thought it was important that we present the school committee with a series of viable recommendations to consider, about, to consider in terms of this being one of the strategies, as Elizabeth mentioned, to getting us to a balanced budget and to addressing the deficit that we have. And so for us, the focus in this work, we did not enter this conversation about performance. We, we were focused on making sure that we had a long-term financial plan and that we had, we had sustainability for the district. We wanted to make sure that we were elevating student learning experience. We didn't want to take away from the experiences that we knew students and families valued, and so we were interested in making sure that whatever we do is, is with the intention of improving the educational experience for students. And equity for this committee and for our work has always been incredibly important as well, to make sure that the students who need the most get the most, our most vulnerable learners, our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, our low-income students, were well-considered in whatever decision we were going to make. And then, of course, we also, like we are tonight, wanted to engage parents, school staff, and the community. The intention was to share information with the community, which was shared on November 3rd, and then to be able to have conversations about this. We, we knew that there would be a lot of emotion, there'd be ideas, there'd be, you know, a lot of comments about this, and this is what I think is always healthy when we were faced with a challenge, is to make sure that all stakeholders have an opportunity to weigh in, and that's beyond just tonight and the other forums we've had. We've tried to be as accessible as we can to the different parent groups, to staffs in schools, and to any organization that wants us to come talk about this. I think we've tried to be as available as possible in doing that. The scenarios that were, sorry, were proposed are four, there were four of them. They actually shared eight, but in the end, the consultants felt that there were four that they wanted us to consider. One involves Salt and Stall and Horace Mann merging at this building, the Horace Mann building. And then Salt and Stall building could be repurposed in some other way for educational purposes. Another scenario has Salt and Stall and Horace Mann merging at Horace Mann, and then Bentley utilizing the Salt and Stall building, and the Bentley ECC building would become a full early childhood center with other pre-K programs coming there. Another scenario has Carlton and Salt and Stall merging at the Salt and Stall building, and then the Carlton building would be offline or become, would become an early learning center or some, have some other educational purpose. And then finally, Carlton and Horace Mann merging again at this building, with Carlton building being offline or becoming an early childhood center. Those were the four recommendations that they made to the school committee on November 3rd. So what I've heard, I've heard a lot about traffic, and I'll say that, I mean, I'm, I shouldn't be surprised. I'm not surprised because I live in that traffic myself, coming in this corridor as well. But the, the issues around traffic are indeed real, and I want to acknowledge that, especially as it pertains to this building and the, and that Salem High School and Horace Mann have similar start times in particular, is incredibly challenging. While I know there's been a lot of questions about the traffic study that was done for the new high school, I will say, it is clear, I had a conversation with the consultant that did that work, that there is a need to, to look more closely at the start and end times, which would have to change if we move more students to the Horace Mann building. That's without a question. We'd have to look at the traffic patterns in and out of here and where people turn, and I've gotten some really thoughtful emails from parents that I think might work traffic for Salem Police, because very thoughtful ideas about, you know, the turns, and I'm sure the Horace Mann folks could give me a lesson and a presentation on that. But there have to be more studies done. But what he was very clear about is that there can be up to fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred students on this property, because when they did the analysis and when we did the planning for Salem High School, we were planning to have a school of fifteen hundred up at Salem High School, because we were looking at a seven to twelve possibility. So he was very clear with me that it is possible, you're going to have to do some more analysis, and I think the school committee, we've talked about this, that you'd have to do more of an, if there, we're going to move more children to Horace Mann. While it's doable, it's not, it's not doable with the start and end times we have now and, and the traffic patterns. And again, I'm sure the Salem High School parents could tell you the same things, and we, we certainly haven't done ourselves any favors with the times that we have set up for the school. So even if there isn't a change here, I think we do have to obviously examine some of the traffic issues we have up here. Class size has been a question. People have jumped to the idea that we're going to elevate class sizes. We, we have committed right now to the class size caps that we have. I think while schools might get bigger, because there might be more students in a school, we would make sure that in a merged school, they would have the same class size caps as any other school in, in the district, and we're hoping to maintain what we've heard over and over again. and we're hoping to maintain what we've heard over and over again, that our teachers and our families really appreciate the class sizes. They'd always like to see them lower. I mean, I hear that too, but that, that they certainly don't want them to be elevated, and they want us to maintain the class sizes we have. We don't, we're not anticipating shifts in class sizes. That was not part of any of the projections in these merger proposals that we made. I do want to say something about larger elementary schools. I know people have real interest in smaller schools, and yes, there are advantages of small communities, whether that be a school, or, you know, a grade level in a school, or at like Collins Middle School, you have each, you know, grade-level pods. There, there, community's important, and having smaller communities within a school, or a school that's small, is something I know, we know families value. But there's also very important values that, or advantages that come from a larger elementary school. There is, having multiple strands, I personally, this is just my own bias, I'm not just saying this for this presentation, I do like schools, elementary schools, having been an elementary principal of three or four strands. I do think it allows a couple of things. It allows teachers-
Superintendent, can you define strand?
Oh, strand, sorry. Classes per grade. So, three or four classes per grade. Thank you, I use my jargon too frequently here. But it is, it is helpful to have multiple grades, classes in a grade level, so that teachers have folks that they can, colleagues that they can plan with, that they can work with sometimes, when you have just one or two other colleagues who maybe aren't teaching the same content area. That can be challenging. Additionally, it does allow for separation of students. I, having been a principal of one-strand school, that was very hard to do, to separate students that should be strategically separated, for whatever reason. It could be for their learning needs, it could be so that we're cohorting kids based on a match with the teacher. There's a lot more possibilities in schools that have more than two classes at every grade level. Additionally, it does allow us to invest in fewer schools. Bigger schools, we can focus the cap, capital needs on fewer elementaries. The resources can get spread out, or, or, the, the resources that are now spread out can get really focused on just a few larger schools than having multiple small schools across the district. And of course, when you do have a bigger school, you can bring more resources to bear at that, to the school. The, the larger the school, the better chance there is also to bring more programming, more experiences to, to the school. For instance, when we moved Salt and Stall to Collins, it did allow us to give access to the Salt and Stall middle schoolers, to all the programs that Collins offers, in the after-school, in the, in terms of sports, the, the arts programs. They have a, they had a theater program, and we didn't have to be, transport kids, which frankly did not work for the last five years, getting kids over from Salt and Stall to Collins. And so, there are advantages of having larger schools that I think we cannot ignore. People have asked a lot about the learning models, specifically about the Carlton innovation model. We've heard a lot of questions, and they've also asked about the Bentley dual-language program. We're committed to those models. Those are innovation plans that are, that are very unique to Salem, that people have told us loud and clear they want for their children. Staff have chosen to work in those schools. In fact, they voted to support a model that they felt was very important to them, and we know parents are choosing those schools actively. We see that in the data in terms of school choice, that parents want those programs for kids. We're not interested in shifting away from models that are, again, high interest for our community. So, I want to be clear about that. People have asked me about choice for families that are not interested in a merger. If a merger were to happen, and they don't want their child to go to school across the city, would they have options to, or they don't think that the new school will be a good match for their child, would they have option, the choice to make other choices for their child? And the answer to that is yes. You know, we have room, as I just showed you before, we do have a lot of room in our schools. We would work with families if they did not want to be part of a merger, and we give first choice to the schools and the families that were impacted. You know, I, I, that didn't come out in the initial presentation. I want to make that clear. I've tried to make that clear in the, in the more recent presentations that we've done, based on the questions we've got. I'll talk about the timeline and transition to close here. So, what happens next? The school committee is going to be discussing a lot of the input that's been received here in the upcoming weeks. We have a school committee meeting the Monday after Thanksgiving, the 1st, and then there is another school committee meeting on the 15th. I think there is still some discussion about what exactly will happen in those meetings, and I think following tonight, the mayor and I will have a conversation, and we'll talk more specifically about what that will look like. But the school committee has yet to deliberate in public about this, and they will be deliberating about this. And I'm certain that there'll be more questions, there'll be more comments from them, more information that they're going to want to receive, based on the feedback that we've been hearing over the last three weeks since the presentation was given. And so, this, and the school committee, I just want to be clear, can really do three, one of three things. They could accept one of the options recommended, they can opt for another option that has been proposed, or was not recommended, if they so choose, or they could make no change at all. And of course, if there is no change, we would, we obviously still have a deficit that we have to address, which Elizabeth had detailed prior. I, it, for us, it is, it is, you know, I, I see it as a positive that we're talking about our budget now, not in March or April. We're having conversation, substantive conversations now, and after the school committee decides what direction they want to go, it will give us clear guidance about the work that we have to do as a district in order to address a deficit that we expect to have come budget season. And then, the other thing I just wanted to share, and this is really, really important, is that folks have asked about, like, what's the plan for transition, if a merger does happen? I, I want to be clear, this is, this cannot just be a flip of a switch, and we say, okay, yeah, these schools are going to merge. It has to be done intentionally, it has to be done thoughtfully, we have to bring communities together, we would have to have a team to oversee the transition, we would have to have a series of events for transition, we, there would have to be extra resources at play, because in any, anytime you do, you make a move like this, there may need to be some extra supports, especially in the first year of a merger. Okay? And, and, and I, that's something we would have to commit to. Additionally, I want to be clear, that a merger does not impact any of the services for students who are on IEPs or have 504 plans. Those are legal documents, we have requirements to follow those plans, and those would not change. They would have to continue to be implemented in the same way they are now with any merger, and we don't expect to impact any of the substantially separate classrooms, because we, again, we have a responsibility to operate the programs that we do. Kids have specific IEPs for the services that they need, and we would continue to honor those. We would, we would want to commit to maintain the unique traditions that every school has. Again, right now, we have very, we have strong elementary schools that people have chosen for a reason. There's something about the school that attracts them to the family, to the, to staff, and we know that there are important traditions, experiences, programs, that we want to maintain the best of whatever the two schools are that come together. And then, of course, we'd have to hold ourselves accountable to monitoring what this looks like. We'd have to monitor to see if it's working. The school committee would certainly hold my team accountable for that, to make sure we were reporting back, that kids were being well-served in this new school, in this merged school, if that's the decision that's ultimately made. And just to close, we will continue to respond to questions via reconfiguration@salemk12.org. We're trying to keep up with the volume of comments and questions. I, I really have appreciated the amount of engagement that people have shared with us, and we will continue to do that. And we, we have also tried to, again, be as accessible as we can to different parent groups that want to talk to us about, you know, with their ideas and thoughts about this. I will just remind you that, as Elizabeth said, behind this presentation is really the presentation we gave last Monday, that has more of the details and the specifics around our budget challenges and some of the data that informed this presentation. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. I want to thank you again for being here tonight, and I hope your families have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. Mayor Pangalo.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. So, we're going to open the meeting to the public comment portion. I would like to remind the public that Salem Public School students regularly attend school committee meetings. Therefore, we encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. The public comment period is an opportunity for us to hear directly from the community. It's not intended to be a debate or a back-and-forth question-and-answer period. Committee members are here to listen to your comments and your feedback and take it in. If you have questions, as Dr. Reich said, you can submit them to reconfiguration@salemk12.org, and that is, that, those questions are distributed to the school committee and to the district staff. If you wish to provide your comments in Spanish or Portuguese, please feel free to do so. We have interpreters here who will translate your remarks. To ensure as many people have an opportunity to speak as possible, the comment time is three minutes per speaker. Speakers will not be permitted to offer comment more than once this evening, and may not yield their time to other speakers. We're going to call folks up in the order in which you signed up. Please note that while you're welcome to share your name and school affiliation with the committee. It's not a requirement to provide comment. Please do be sure to speak into the microphone, and if you want to share feedback in writing, again, the email address is reconfiguration@salemk12.org, and the website is salemk12.org/reconfiguration, with all the slides and the information. Mayor Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Polly for the presentation this evening. I just wanted to add, Superintendent, because you were mentioning some things about the process, that there is what's in the school committee's kind of engagement with respect to these public hearings, but also that my colleagues have been attending the various community-based forums with the different school communities. And I want to extend the same offer, because I recognize the open-meeting law, kind of how we're structured here. It does lend itself to a more adversarial conversation, one-sided. It's, it's something that I've talked about at length, that, you know, I, I wish that we had town-meeting-style government, where we could really kind of dive in when we were holding these hearings. It's the format that we have. But if, for those that may not necessarily be the most comfortable coming up to the microphone, I made the same offer last night. I'm planning on staying after the meeting. I hope the superintendent will join me to just be able to meet with folks in community informally. We can have more discussion and just hear from you if you're not comfortable coming before us in that manner. And then, for those that do speak another language, I speak Spanish and a little bit of Portuguese, so please feel comfortable joining us.
Thank you. And we will start with Erica Clifford. And next up after Erica will be Jared D'Amico.
Good evening. My name's Erica Clifford, and I'm speaking as the president of the Horace Mann Parent Teacher Committee. First, I want to thank you. I recognize that this process is complex, emotional, and time-intensive, and we appreciate the work that has already gone into exploring possible paths forward. We understand why these conversations are happening and agree they require thoughtful solutions. My goal tonight is simply to make sure decisions reflect the real-time operational and physical limitations of the Horace Mann site during the upcoming high school construction. Currently, Horace Mann serves about 318 students. We just saw in the presentation that numbers have changed slightly, but Carlton has 250, and Salt and Stall has 272. Under the merger scenarios discussed, Horace Mann's enrollment would increase to roughly 568 to 590 students. For context, the largest elementary school in the district right now has 464 students, and Collins Middle School serves 611. So, in practice, Horace Mann would begin operating much closer to our middle school in size than an elementary school. Now, on paper, our building is able to accommodate more students, and we appreciate that the physical space was designed with expansion in mind. But the reality is, our location and campus access were not. Right now, Horace Mann and Salem High School share one single entry point for all parent drop-off and pickup, all buses, all staff and visitor parking, and all deliveries and service vehicles. There's no available on-street parking, so every vehicle has to enter through that same narrow roadway. And we all know what September and October traffic in Salem look like. Busy is an understatement. The traffic study being referenced, being referenced, doesn't reflect that lived reality. It was conducted in December, after the peak months of the school year, including October in Salem, had passed. It was also conducted after Salem State University students left for break, and during the period when the temporary bike landmarkers are removed. All of these timing factors significantly reduce congestion. So, while the data exists, it does not represent real-world conditions during a typical school year at full activity. It also assumed Horace Mann would remain in current configuration. 1,500 kids were planned for the end of the construction period, not during it. If the campus is expected to support nearly 600 elementary students while simultaneously functioning as an active construction zone for several years, traffic isn't a footnote. It becomes a core operational and safety issue. Beyond traffic, a school of that size requires administrative staffing and resources scaled to our middle school, not just our next-largest elementary school, protected program spaces, including stride, pre-K, art, music, multilingual learner support, and intervention spaces, and thoughtful scheduling for recess, lunch assemblies, and parent engagement. I want to be clear, if a merger happens, our community will show up with empathy, kindness, and partnership. Any school community would be welcome here. That's part of who we are. But values alone cannot solve infrastructure limitations or construction site logistics. So, our ask is a simple one. Before a final vote is taken that would lead to a merger at Horace Mann, we're requesting that updated site-specific analysis, including traffic design, construction staging, and operational planning, based on the actual conditions this campus will face over the next several years. Once those realities are included alongside enrollment and budget considerations, we believe the most responsible path forward will become clearer for everyone. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to Salem's students and families.
After Jared, Kristin Lutovak.
Good evening. My name is Jared D'Amico, and I'm the proud dad of two kind, precocious, and hilarious girls, Bella and Sabrina. Before I get to my comments for the school committee, I want to start with a message for all of the other parents here today. I am so sorry that we have all been thrust into this situation, but I could not ask for a better group of neighbors and friends with whom to share the community I love so dearly. Whether we have one school or 11 schools, I want your kids to get the same education I want for my own two girls, regardless of which school they attend. And I appreciate the immense thought and care so many of you have put into your feedback over this last month. As someone who's dedicated his life to public service, I understand the complexity and stakes of the choice being considered by the school committee. I have led and influenced projects affecting between 2 and 3 million of our Commonwealth's most vulnerable residents. And I believe that here in Massachusetts, our choices at the polls reflect a clear demand for good government. But good government is hard. In situations like this, good government means conducting a thorough analysis of available data, and working to understand risks and impacts for key stakeholders. It means developing and sharing a clear and well-articulated operational plan. It means investing deeply in community partnerships, where officials proactively seek, consider, and apply feedback from their constituents. But perhaps most importantly, good government means changing course when the data, operational realities, and needs of the community require it. So, where are we today? While the data tells us that closing a school will save money, but not nearly enough to address the budget gap, especially when accounting for new costs like increased IEPs, transportation changes, and student departures. Current operational planning has not yet shown that the district is ready to make this enormous change in nine short months without a significant risk of disruption for kids, families, and educators. Throughout the community, families are saying that they feel rushed, frustrated, and confused about which information the committee is using to make its decision. Furthermore, while we know that the school committee is listening, we don't yet know whether or how members are actually going to apply this feedback to their decision-making. To be clear, I think that members of the school committee are good people who genuinely want the best for our kids. I have deep respect for Dr. Reich and his efforts to work within these extreme budgetary confines. I am actually not opposed to reconfiguring schools, even my kids' own school, if it is justified and done the right way. However, I am against bad government. To this end, I implore the school committee to hold another public meeting after December 1st, so the community has a chance to respond after hearing members deliberate for the first time. I implore the district to create a reconfiguration work group with parents and educators from affected elementary schools, so we can ensure that parents' voices are included in any reconfiguration efforts. And I implore the school committee to prove to its constituents why permanently closing a school on this timeline justifies the risk to our community for limited budget savings. If you believe in good government- If you believe in good government, like the people who voted for you, now is your chance to prove it. Thank you.
After Kristin, it is Emma Logan.
I'm the parent of a thriving Carlton student in first grade, or P2. I'm thankful to have found and joined the incredible Carlton community. My daughter is happy, curious, energetic, and loves learning. My daughter also has a complex medical history. She had a stroke at birth. And when a newborn has a stroke, you don't immediately see the impact. Instead, MRI images inform guesses about the future development that may be affected. You learn, you worry, and you wait. As a new mom, I realized this is going to be a waiting game. It also occurred to me, though, that parenting itself is a waiting game for everyone. We're all loving our children, doing our best, and waiting to see what each day brings. We don't know when a new need may present itself, so as we wait, we work. Parents are deliberately forming communities and growing our teams of support each day, including the schools we have chosen. Our support teams keep us calm through uncertainty. They know our kids, and because they know our kids, they can tell us she had a great day, or something seemed off. They notice behavior changers that lead to referrals for evaluation. They are ready to act quickly after building relationships over years. Hearing families share what they value in their school communities reminds me that Salem is an incredible place. If children are forced to change schools, I believe new communities will grow over years. I worry about the time this will take and the interventions that will be delayed as a result. Delayed intervention delays learning, and lost learning time is tough to make up. My daughter's MRI told us to pay attention to her vision. There may be field loss or disruptions to visual processing. Her specialist said, wait until she's seven or eight. As she grows, she'll be better able to describe what she sees, and as her cognitive challenges increase in school, new struggles may arise. And about a month ago, after all of this waiting, she said, Mom, I need to tell you something about my vision. She was ready to describe something she'd been noticing for a while. And about a week later, I learned her school may close, and that the Carlton community that supports her so beautifully may not exist in six months. Now, my daughter is as tough as they come, and we will shoulder whatever we need to. But I don't want to ask her to handle avoidable challenges, and I don't want other families to do this either. We can't pause our children's needs, but you can pause a process that hasn't fully accounted for them. And as I schedule assessments for my daughter, I hope for her school community to be a constant. I hope another solution is found to avoid dismantling these many strong communities. I hope we will not unsettle children's lives and strain our ability to support them. I hope that you are listening and that you will review closing schools as a last resort that will do harm. Thank you.
After Emma, it is Heather McLean.
Good evening. My name is Emma Logan. I'm the PTC treasurer at Horace Mann, and I have two students who attend this school. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that I understand what it means to manage a deficit and make high-stakes decisions under financial pressure. I don't envy this decision for any of you. I run a department at an academic medical center, and the last few years have been very, very difficult in terms of budgeting, staffing, and doing more with less. So I don't come here pretending that this work is simple or that we have a solution that's going to make everyone happy. And I truly appreciate the time, thought, and effort that all of you have put into this, and clearly listening to the concerns that many members of the community have. That being said, my responsibility as a parent is to advocate for what I feel is safest and most developmentally sound for the children who are going to be living through these consequences. I want to echo what Erica shared, because from the parent perspective, this merger conversation looks very different in lived reality than what it does on paper. At Horace Mann, it works really well because of the scale. The kids here are known by name, by need, by temperament, and this is echoed at many of the schools throughout the district. Relationships come first. The building is sized in a way that allows teachers and staff to actually do the work that we ask them to do. My son is in fourth grade. He has dyslexia and ADHD, and at this school, he isn't overloaded. He's been able to receive individualized support, real one-on-one help, consistent intervention, and of course, you know, it's easy to say on paper that IEPs and individual things are not going to be changed, but how that actually looks in reality can be very different than paper. So when we talk about merging into a school approaching 600 students, which is far above the state average, we're not just talking about hallway congestion or traffic flow, we're talking about the real risk that individualized supports, the supports for our kids are going to be stretched too thin to be effective. And that raises the question that we still don't have clear answers to, which is if this plan is meant to take effect next fall, how can we realistically guarantee that the education services and interventions of our kids that they are currently receiving won't be diminished? It doesn't give us a lot of time to actually put into plan effective resources. So I don't need to repeat every data point that Erica laid out. You guys also did a great job looking at all the data. But I want to speak clearly that, you know, in addition to the traffic, in addition to the actual relocation of staff, the schedule changes, the breaks, there are a lot of impacts on our students that need to be considered, and the timeframe doesn't allow us to do that. So Horace Mann families are resilient. All of the students across the district are resilient, and no matter what, you know, we are going to say no to anyone. Everyone community is going to be united and accepted no matter what. However, our ask is specific, that we look at traffic, construction staging, safety logistics, special education capacity, operational flow, staffing, and program space. Actual reality is not theoretical models. So that is our ask for the school committee as you look forward with this decision. Thank you.
And following Heather will be Rachel Ellison.
Good evening. Thank, ooh, I'm going to leave that alone. I think I'm loud enough. Yes? Okay, great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Heather McLean, and I am a Salem Public Schools graduate. I started my career at Horace Mann South in kindergarten, up on the hill at Dead Man's Curve. Completed my elementary school at Horace Mann North, which was on Lafayette Street, was middle school east at the Saltonstall Building and Salem High School. So I am aware of school reconfigurations over the years, and I do understand that. And as a parent coming back into the school system, as I had been away for quite some time, I had friends in the school system, and I had kind of asked, you know, what's good? You hear certain things. I actually moved from Lynn to come back to Salem when my daughter was school age, because I didn't want her in that school district. But I was unaware of what had been going on. And I was told by some people that you want to go to Bates for elementary, and then you want to get out of the city of Salem. Well, I had that information, and I filled out my school choice paperwork, and I did not get the first choice of Bates, as I was told at the time. I got Horace Mann. And I sent my daughter Horace Mann as a pre-K, and there were changes back four years ago. She's a second grader now. So there was lots of, you know, there was a principal that I never got a chance to meet before I got a chance to meet a covering principal, and then, you know, Ms. Tully. But through all that turmoil in that '22, '23, I think, first school year, I could be wrong with the years, but four years ago, my daughter did wonderful here. She found a space here. She was loved here and nurtured here. And that sense of community, even though it was all new and all disjointed, was very strong. And from that moment on, I said, well, wait a minute, I can choose. And lots of people went and went scattered different places when it came time to do kindergarten, or even first grade, and I stayed and we stayed, because this is her school. And the biggest part of that is because of the culture that the school here at Horace Mann has created. So I know it's not lost on all of you, that the reconfiguration will create a significant culture change for the schools involved and for the district at large. And a lot of work would need to be done to build a shared culture. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge Principal Tully and the staff and teachers, administrators, and the PTC at Horace Mann for the outstanding culture that they have built. A number of us parents, because I started with my words, these are now words of another parent who didn't want to be named, but I'm rallying behind it because I believe it. So I can say us, a number of us have seen this strong culture through our children's eyes, and I want to lift that up here. Our children are so proud to be Huskies. They embody the PAWS values, which is an acronym for perseverance, acts respectful and responsible, welcoming and safe. My child comes home with a PAWS slip and a reason why. And I got a message today from Ms. Jay that said, your second grader did great in library. And my daughter said, oh, maybe that's why I got my PAWS today. And her sticker was proudly on the top of her water bottle. So they proudly display their PAWS, they enjoy gathering in their dog houses on half-days, and they get to interact with classmates in other grades and many other traditions that we have here. You know, each morning, the Horace Mann team, as I'm sure other schools' teams, I'm just not there, so I can't speak to them, but I'm sure other school teams are there outside, rains, shines, sleet, snow, we're kind of like the post office, but they are greeting students as they arrive. And our children just love coming to school. So I want to thank the Horace Mann team, the PTC, for building this culture and the sense of community, and I want to keep that whether we welcome in other students or not or however this process goes. So thank you Superintendent Strick, Mayor Pangalo, the school committee members for keeping the importance of culture in mind. I'll spare you from doing the husky howl, but our students do it, and it's infectious, and we just want to keep that going however this works out. Thank you.
Rachel Ellison, and then Ray Jerslow.
Can everyone hear me? All right. My name is Rachel Ellison. I am one of the stride teachers here at Horace Mann. This is my 10th year in the district and in this position. I want to thank everyone for their time and consideration and their dedication to our school district. So my perspective is a little different from some of the parents speaking, since I am a teacher. And I want to remind people of the history of the stride program, at least since I've started. So when I started, there was one elementary stride class for the whole district, and it was housed over at Witchcraft. It was paired alongside the RISE program. As the years passed, our programs grew and grew, so we had to create more and more classrooms with the programs. The lines between the programs became a little blurred because we were in such close proximity. Stride slowly started moving to Horace Mann, I believe, in 2020. It started with kindergarten, and I stayed at Witchcraft until those kids were in, went to middle school. I ended up moving over here to Horace Mann with three students who followed me. Here at Horace Mann, we've added a third classroom and to really help house our influx of students with significant needs. Since I've been here for about 10 years, I've experienced the shutdown of Bowditch and the addition of those dispersed kids over at Witchcraft. That school was pretty close to maximum capacity when that happened, and space in the building was tight. My classroom with students with some of our most significant needs was moved to a small room that's now a speech pathologist's office. My students who work on personal hygiene and some self-help skills, like in the restroom, lost access to their individualized bathrooms. Students in my room and staff were forced to shut down the Gen Ed bathroom to help students who needed help with limited mobility and additional assistance. We did our best to maintain our students' dignity in front of their peers, but at times it could be difficult. This also meant that the general education boys had to wait the bathroom until we reopened it when staff and students were outside. So that was also time off learning for them. A few years later is when the change went into effect and things have been going much better. In some of the recommendations when, where Horace Mann was involved, in the notes, there was a special education recommendation saying that stride moved to Witchcraft. I have heard what Dr. Strick and a lot of administration has said, and I'm confident in our administration that stride will not be moving. During this public forum, I would like to advocate for our program if Horace Mann is involved with the merger, and it will bring us close to capacity. So here are some of the things I just want you, everyone, to keep in mind when thinking about Horace Mann. The first thing is the bathrooms. Currently, most of our students need to walk all the way down to the end of the hallway to use a single-stall, gender-neutral bathroom. There are many stride students and non-stride students who use this bathroom. And again, there's only one gender-neutral student bathroom on the floor. So occasionally, it creates a line. If there are more students added to our building, there's going to be a greater need for that bathroom, and I'm worried about the time off learning if there are lines and things like that. I'm also concerned about space and numbers. I know Dr. Strick talked about the numbers in the building, spaces in classrooms, but I do want to remind everyone that stride, our classrooms have six to 10 kids currently, so it doesn't show a full 20, 22 kids in a room. But that space is needed. Our students have significant accommodations, specialized equipment, and break spaces that take up a lot of that space and that are needed for, oh, I'm so sorry.
You're over the three minutes.
Oh, sorry. But yeah. So just really taking into consideration the space and the bathrooms and everything. Sorry.
You're right. If you can send the rest of that in writing to the email address, that would be great. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the following Ray will be Megan Estacio.
Hello, my name is Ray Jerslow. I'm a resident of Salem for over 30 years, and my son and daughter are graduates of the Salem Public School system. And I'm proud to say my son's an aerospace engineer, and my daughter's in medical school on her way to becoming a doctor. So your students with this school system, the possibilities are endless, but you need to help them out and not just rely on the excellent educational staff of the school. With that being said, as future vested partners in the new high school that's planning on being built, I have something to say. Salem taxpayers are being asked to vote on a tax override to fund the new high school at a minimum cost of $300 per year for the next 20 years. Tonight, I want to address an issue that has been completely overlooked in the design plans for the new high school that risks leading us into a catastrophic and entirely avoidable mistake that could cost the city far more than anyone is acknowledging. At last Thursday's building committee meeting, I asked a simple question. Has radon been addressed at any stage of the planning for the new high school? The answer was a simple no. That response is shocking. The EPA issued radon guidance for schools in 1994 and updated it in 2023, and here's a copy of that. In the model policy 807 publication, the MSBA and the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents recommend implementing a health and safety program that includes specific planning requirements radon. That's this publication. For a project costing hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars, ignoring a known carcinogen is totally unacceptable. Somehow, Perkins and Will never brought it up, and the co-chair of the new high school building committee, who is an architect, never raised it either. That stretches credibility. For those who may not know, radon is an invisible, odorless radioactive gas. Indoors, it can become a carcinogen. The American Lung Association lists radon as the second-leading cause of lung cancer deaths in this country. And here's a copy of that. Salem is in the EPA's highest-risk zone, and the school is planned on granite ledge risking it even further. And here's the EPA study wearing the red. Still, the committee has not discussed radon once. Maine, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Vermont are among the states requiring radon testing in schools. Massachusetts does not. But the state's legislature, 322-page report on green and healthy schools published this past March mentions radon over 100 times and states clearly that radon should be considered in the design and construction of new school buildings. And here's a copy of the cover of that report they made. So why hasn't it been? According to this report, the biggest reason districts avoid radon is fairer cost. Some would rather not test because a result exceeding limits might require action. In playing language, we're being told that protecting students and faculty In playing language, we're being told that protecting students and faculty's health is too expensive. We've heard that the new high school will cost taxpayers about $300 a year. But that number means nothing if in a few years, we're forced to jackhammer, open a brand-new building to install a radon mitigation system that should have been included from the start. And who pays for that failure? It's not going to be the consultants. It's not going to be the designers. It's going to be the taxpayers. That's you, that's me, and that's members of this committee. And this will hit especially hard on elderly residents living on fixed incomes who are already stretched thin. And remember.
That's the three minutes.
Sorry?
That's three minutes.
Okay. I just urge you to contact your city councils in this matter. Thank you.
Megan Stasio and then Julia Dyeroff.
Can you hear me? Okay, it's pretty high. Hi, my name is Megan Stasio. I did speak last Monday, but I'm going to keep repeating myself, I guess, as we all are through this process. I'm a parent to a seventh grader at Collins and a third and first grader at Salt and Stall. I do want to thank the school committee team for being accessible and allowing these meetings that we've had over the past few weeks to happen. I understand that this is a difficult task to be working on. I want to start off, oh, I did say I was about Salt and Stall, sorry. I want to start off by recognizing where Salt and Stall families are right now. This is our first year fully adjusting to our K through five structure. It was implemented after last year's sudden elimination of our middle school. That decision happened quickly with very little time for families, students, or staff to prepare. And while our community has done everything we can do to adapt, it's been a major shift and one that we are still actively navigating. Across Salem, every school is special. Families in every building feel a sense of belonging, connection, and safety within their school walls. No one wants to lose a place that feels familiar, supportive, and like family. I know every school community here wants to protect the school home that they've built for their children, and Salt and Stall is no different. What makes Salt and Stall unique, though, is how many times we've already adapted. Over the years, we've embraced multi-grade classrooms, year-round schedules, school-wide instructional models, and most recently, the complete reconstructuring from our K through eight to K through five. Every time the district has asked us to change, our community has stepped up, worked hard, and made it work. But the truth is, adapting takes time, and our families have not had that time. That is why that it has been incredibly difficult to hear that yet another major change is being discussed for Salt and Stall before we have even settled into the structure that was just implemented this year. Families feel blindsided, not just by the possibility of closures or mergers, but by the speed of this process and the lack of clear, timely communication. We are being asked to consider proposals that could reshape our school again by fall 2026, without the transparency or information necessary to participate meaningfully. Our school's done everything asked of it. We've adjusted, restructured, rebuilt, and adapted more times than I can count. All we are asking now is simple. Let us keep our building and let us keep our educational home. Give our children, families, and staff the stability we've earned. Please keep the transparency up and the honesty and give us the time we deserve. Thank you.
Julia and then Tim Flynn.
Can you hear me? Good evening, and thank you to everyone for being here to listen tonight. My name is Julia Dyeroff. I'm the parent of three Salem Public School students, a sixth grader at Collins. And at Carlton, I have an E1 junior and a fourth trimester P2 student. It can be very confusing. But I have never doubted that their teachers know exactly what they need and have a plan to get them there. I've got three different kids with three wildly different personalities, and the Carlton community has found a place for all of them, and they have thrived there. And I'm also a Salem Public Schools employee, a kindergarten para here at Horace Mann. Go Huskies! In a previous life, I taught high school and middle school English. And when I decided to return to the workforce, I knew I wanted to be in an elementary school instead. And I knew I wanted to work in Salem because of the core values of Salem Public Schools. We live those values every day here at Horace Mann, welcoming every student, challenging them, celebrating with them, and doing it all together. Sorry. The community we have built here is awesome. So I'm very invested in Salem Public Schools and so invested that in both 2021 and 2024, I attended the meetings about the new high school. And you have listed these meetings as part of the timeline for this reconfiguration process. And the consultants did say that they were considering everything, but they did not ask us about closing an elementary school. They did not engage us in that conversation. And if you were talking about it back then, you were not including us. And I truly believe you want to change that now. I come here tonight to urge you to slow down and to make a real plan, a plan that will allow all Salem Public School students to thrive. Plan from our strengths, not by slotting one school into another based on the number of students and the size of the building. A hasty decision now will cost us dearly, and I mean that in all ways. Children will suffer in an ill-thought-out move, and it will literally cost us money to redo and rethink and repair these decisions. We need a real plan to grow the dual-language program. We need a real plan to bring Carlton's successes to more students. We need a real plan to accommodate early childhood education. I have heard at multiple meetings that there's a vague plan to build a new, large elementary school in South Salem sometime in the future. Well, make that plan now and include us, families, and educators in the conversation. Will you be reconfiguring schools again to fill that school? Let us know now. It might seem like years from now is a long time, but families stay at an elementary school for six years or more if there are siblings. Think about the students and the families looking at kindergarten and pre-K this year. Make a plan for Salem Public Schools that will last their whole elementary tenure. Do not surprise them like you have us. Slow down, listen, engage, and then plan. Thank you.
After Tim, it's Wilma Avila.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm the newly-elected War Force City Councilor, so I wanted to get involved in this. I have three children, and my youngest is a sophomore in college. So my children are not being affected by this. But I can give you a couple examples through my experience why I don't think this is a good idea. Back in March 2018, it was my first year on the city council. And I remember getting a call from the former mayor Driscoll that they were closing the Bowditch school. And it was a very stressful time because I had a lot of people reaching out to me because the children, a lot of them were going up to the Witchcraft School, which is in Ward Four. And, you know, I always said for every action, there's a reaction. We had the children that were upset, the parents that were upset of leaving the school. But you also had the Witchcraft students where it really put a strain on them because I heard firsthand from parents and from teachers up there. And I would like the school committee and the mayor, superintendent, please spend some time and speak to the teachers up at Witchcraft because they can tell you firsthand, it really is not as smooth as it sounds on paper or on slides. And that's one thing that I really care about is the children. Another concern that I have is obviously people know that our city is growing. There's a lot of positive growth, and there's good and there's bad with that. But we can't ignore the fact that with positive growth, you're going to have more students, not less students. In a short time, you're going to have the property at the former Bertini's, Lee Fort Terrace, Franklin Street, Grove Street are going to be occupied, and there's going to be children there. And why not have that class space that we have? That's a luxury that many communities don't have. I've been in all the schools. I'm a retired firefighter, and I taught fire safety. So I know all the buildings, and we have some really, really nice buildings that we should be proud of. Definitely not look at closing them. One other thing that we got to really, really look at is that I'm sure people know there's a big proposal going on for Shetland Properties. They're talking about 1,200 new apartments. What are we looking at for students there? It's certainly going to have students. They're not going to be all single adults. Do we want to do something like this and get ourselves in trouble when we have something special going on right now? Just a couple of things to think about. I went to school at Salt and Stall. I have a lot of pride in that school, and I really loved that school. My father went there, and my aunts and uncles. And I can remember when I was in seventh grade, it converted over to Middle School East. So I was a seventh grader, older than these students. And I can tell you, I was really stressed out about it. I mean, you have a lot of pride in your school. You really do. And you can hear students from different schools talk about, hey, I'm a Collins student or, you know, I'm a Salt and Stall student. That means something. And as a parent, I saw my children, the stress on them, as foolish as it sounds, just entering the next grade, from second grade, the third grade, the fourth grade. And at Witchcraft, the little tradition is the students go up like a few days before school, and they're looking, who's my teacher? Who's this? And there's stress there, you know what I mean? Because some of your friends aren't going to be in your class anymore. And it's a change, and it is a stressful time. And as a parent, you'll see that go on middle school and high school. So I would ask that you consider this, and I support all of you. I think you're doing a good job. But let's slow down and take a look at this before it's too late. Thank you.
After Wilma is Cameron Hart.
Hi there, my name is Wilma Avila, and I apologize, I don't have like a lengthy, well-organized speech to give. But I just wanted to mention that the traffic is unbearable. Coming into Horace Mann and adding the students, it would just be really tough on us. And I think that it's imperative that another entrance is made on Highland Ave. This year, I have a daughter here at Horace Mann, and I have a daughter at the ECC. And Horace Mann starts at 7:30 a.m., and the ECC starts at 8:45. So I have an hour and 15-minute gap between the two of them, and I'm running back and forth from home trying to get them ready to and from school. Then I have pickup at 12:00, and then I have another pickup at 2:15 p.m. In a day, I'm in my car for three hours daily commuting just in the city. As a result of this, I was forced to quit my job this year because I couldn't afford adequate daycare and transportation to accommodate this schedule. I won't be in this situation next year, but someone else will be, and that's why I'm mentioning it. I have always said that my kids' education will come first, and I will make whatever changes are necessary to make sure their education comes first, including being involved in my kids' schools, attending all of these meetings and the PTO meetings, and coming to school events such as this one. My father went to school in Guatemala, and he only made it to middle school. He studied in classrooms that were made of dirt. Whenever he, if he had a pencil and his neighbor didn't have a pencil, he would break his in half and give it to his neighbor. So I think that we also need to see how lucky we are to have all of these special programs that are offered to us and all of the choices that we have. And I also think that we need to focus on, I don't know, Dr. Z, you can put the previous slide about what it is that you guys are actually going to be doing with the, that you're going to have a committee meeting to make sure. Yes, so what happens next? Transition team to oversee, yeah, that one, this one. This is what we need to focus on. Transition team to oversee the merger. The parents need to come together to make sure that these things are happening. Because looking at the budget, it's like if my daughter told me tomorrow, Mom, I want to go to Disney. If I don't have the budget for it, I just can't give it to her. I want to. I want to go to Disney. I want to do it, but I can't. And that's kind of how I feel like this is happening. This budget, like the deficit, $5 million, it's a huge deficit. We can't keep operating like this year after year. Something has to happen. It's very unfortunate that all of these families are going to be affected. But this, parents, is what we need to focus on. Because gratitude comes, that values, the respect and gratitude, all of that comes from home first. And then we can bring them into our schools. We are going to teach our kids these values and this respect. We're going to tell our kids to welcome the new kids to this school if a new merger happens. So yeah, that's kind of all I want to say.
Cameron Hart.
I'm going to start by saying I'm not a big fan of public speaking, but the circumstances, I felt like it was necessary. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cameron Hart. I'm a former Salem Public Schools graduate and also a proud Carlton graduate. I'm currently employed at Carlton, the same school that helped shape who I am today. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. The speech began as a writing assignment for my class at Salem State, but it quickly became personal. Carlton is not just another school in my community. It is a place that built my foundation, pushed me forward, and showed me what a strong learning environment should look like. I spent my whole elementary school journey at Carlton, and my fifth grade year was when the innovation plan began. So I was only able to experience part of it. Even then, I could already see how much the school cared about its students and how it was evolving to support them. My siblings went through Salem Public Schools as well, and three of them completed their elementary years under the full innovation plan at Carlton. I've seen firsthand how it helped them grow into confident, independent, and engaged learners. My younger cousin is also at Carlton now, and her progress shows exactly what the school does for students every day. In the short three months I've been working at Carlton, I've built meaningful relationships with so many wonderful students. Seeing their curiosity and potential has been inspiring. It also makes me genuinely concerned about how they could be affected if changes happen too quickly. As soon as I saw the opening at Carlton, I eagerly submitted my application. I want to return to the school that shaped me and be part of the same environment that continues to support and guide students today. That is why the possibility of merging Carlton is deeply concerning. It threatens a community intentionally built to support students' growth. Changing that environment would affect real students, real learning, and real futures. Carlton has a proven record of giving students the guidance, confidence, and opportunities they need to succeed, and that cannot just simply be recreated elsewhere. This may begin as an assignment for a college class, but the message was real and still is real. Carlton deserves to remain what we know it as. Its students deserve this ability to flourish, and our community deserves to preserve a school that has positively shaped so many lives for generations, including my own. I urge the school committee to reconsider, or at the very least, take the time to think it all through carefully rather than rushing to a decision in less than a month. Thank you for listening, and thank you for considering what is truly best for our students in our district. Thank you.
Ted Burnham.
Good evening. My name is Ted Burnham, and my pronouns are he/him. I'm a Carlton parent and an ECC parent, and I am a member of Democratic Socialists of America, which drives me to believe that schools are one of our most important civic institutions, as I said at the forum last week. I took a pretty combative tone last week, and I'm trying to come in with a different mindset tonight because I still have a lot of anger and frustration and confusion about this process. But I also want to say that I'm really trying to get on board with a vision for what this looks like. And I just don't see it yet. And I'm hearing that from a lot of other parents, too. I mean, Jared said it earlier, like there are a lot of folks who are saying like we're not against reconfiguration in principle. But the story that's being told in these slides right now is that this is driven by a budget concern that the reconfiguration doesn't solve. The best projections are that it's like maybe close to half of the budget shortfall for next year. Where's the rest of that money going to come from? If $4.5 million, or $4.9, whatever it was this year, meant cutting 56 educators, are we going to go through this reconfiguration and then still have huge cuts to other parts of the school system? That's the story that I'm hearing, is that those cuts are still coming. And it's hard to get on board with that vision. But there's not a compelling story to go along with this about how this supports the long-term vision of Salem Public Schools. And there's a lot of things that it could be supporting. The ECC, the expansion of the dual-language program, the expansion of the innovation programs. Like, we're all talking about these things, we're hearing about these things. The teachers' contract that expanded what we're paying our educators in ways that still don't measure up to what they probably deserve. I just feel like it's heartbreaking that we're in this position where like y'all who've been part of those decisions, like you're pushing for really progressive stuff for this city. It's really amazing to see. And at the same time, it just like the story I'm hearing is, oh, we didn't plan to budget for these things. budget for these things in the way that we need to to pay for them. And it would be so much easier to talk about reconfiguration if it was, like, tied to those decisions, and I think, like, that's what I'm still looking for here. It's like, if this is going to enable us to expand the ECC programming in this town, reconfigure my kids' school. I want more people to have free childcare and free daycare, you know, preschool, like, all of that is so good for Salem. If it's expanding the dual-language program into a new building, if it's expanding the innovation program, like, if that's actually going to happen, I'm on board. Like, it's not hard to get me on board with this. But again, that's not the story I'm seeing yet. So I'm really hoping that at that December 1st meeting, that there's new info that y'all are talking about, that to show, like, what you've been gathering beyond just these meetings, but like, what new facts are you understanding? What new plans are being worked on? Show us that, like, whatever you decide to move ahead on, that you can convince people like me that it is going to have a massive improvement on the budget for years to come, or that it is visionary and mission-aligned, and the benefits will make the pain of this process worth it.
Thank you, Ted. That's over through that.
Thanks. Yeah, and I hope the community stays engaged.
That concludes the public comment. Member Cruz.
Move to adjourn.
Motion was made by Member Cruz, seconded by Member Cornell. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries the adjourn. Thank you, everybody.